No mistake in the Kennedy.
Good evening. We'll call to order the city council meeting for April 19th, 2022. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Maldonado Vales?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Puelo?
Here.
Izzy Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Before we get started, I'd like to turn this over to councillor Revere for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take a moment of silence. This past weekend, a friend of mine, Justin Chavez, not just my friend, a community friend to a lot of people here in Hoyoke, local rapper, passed away. He kind of created the logo "Made in Hoyoke" and kind of promoted and kind of put Hoyoke on the map on another level with the rap game, in a sense, and with the media and marketing game overall. If you go on Apple iTunes, if you go on YouTube and you look up extraordinary "Made in Hoyoke," there's a lot of scenery around City Hall. He helped uplift the community for a while, and recently we just lost him. And yesterday, we had a memorial in the flats. He grew up in the flats with us. So I kind of want to like take some time here at this level and like show him some respect and some love for all that he tried to dedicate to uplift the city of Hoyoke.
Ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Before we get started on the agenda, I'd like to actually just point out one thing. The 126th Boston Marathon took place, and our own, Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, ran it in four hours, 57 minutes, and 51 seconds.
Wow.
Congratulations. And on top of that, raised over $11,000 for Dana Farber. Thank you very much.
Great job.
Great job. Great job. I'd still be running it. Actually, I'd probably be laying in the street, just being honest. All right, so there are three items that are laid on the table. Any... I do believe these were wait for legal form. I think that's what it was.
So motion to take up off item one and three off the table?
One and three?
Yes.
A motion is to take up one and three. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. One is the committee on ordinance who was referred in order that the city council amend Hoyoke zoning ordinance section 71053 by deleting other use as listed. And then three is the committee on ordinance who was referred in order that the current buffer and the marijuana ordinance 200 feet be reviewed and revised to school residencies, and those are both recommended to be adopted. Under discussion would be councillor Bacon. Can you hear us, councillor Bacon?
Oh, she's muted. She's there.
She muted? Are you muted, councillor Bacon?
She's talking. No, I don't think it's...
It's frozen.
I think it's the chambers.
She's not muted. If you guys can hear me, I'm not sure. It's probably something wrong with her computer. Maybe.
Okay. All right, so councillor Bacon having trouble.
We'll come back to it.
We'll come back to it when she gets back on. Two is from the handicap... it was a handicap, so that would also be councillor Bacon. So we'll wait until she can come back. So we'll get that going.
Make a motion to just re-table them for now.
Motion is to re-table one and three until we get councillor Bacon back. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Public comment. I do have the sheet here. First is Helene Florio. Just as a reminder for those who are signed up, whether it's here or online, it's a minute and a half, around the minute mark. I'll just give you a wave. I'm not trying to interrupt you, but just letting you know. And then when one minute and 30 seconds comes up, we'll go from there. So with that, Helene Florio. Just state name and address. Is it on?
Helene Florio, 31 Wellesley Road, Hoyoke. Councillors, please note I stand here today representing HTA legally and technically. HTA is not against any Girls Inc. program. Rather, it is on a technical ground for taxpayer funding that I'm here. HTA didn't set the rules. It only abides by them, as it should be the case for any elected official who has a sworn oath to uphold all laws. The issue is not on the merits of services rendered and/or programming by Girls Inc. It is on the use of taxpayer monies for specific projects purposes promulgated by rules set by the funding authorities. That is the law, and all must, should abide accordingly. HTA is not in the business of doing favors. Its purpose and function is to make certain that taxpayer monies are spent legally and wisely, no different than the purpose and function of the Honorable City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ann Tallheimer.
During discussion in charter... oh, sorry, Ann Tallheimer, 97, Brown Avenue.
Thank you.
During discussion in charter and rules last week, a member of this very body said, quote, "I gotta be honest with you. I don't even remember who my opponents were. Well, one I remember because it keeps recurring, but other than that, I don't even know who they were. It's like a reoccurring nightmare, but that's okay. I'll deal with that when I have to deal with it again." That's how a member of this body spoke last week about a constituent and engaged voter in Hoyoke during recorded public meeting held in City Hall. That's how a member of this body, bound by rule 18, which states, quote, "No member in debate shall make any references to another member or member of the general public," but in respectful terms, spoke about me. Reoccurring nightmare doesn't sound particularly respectful. It is unacceptable and unprofessional in the extreme to talk about members of the public in this way during city council meetings. This isn't the first time it's happened, but there is still no process of sanction or censure for someone who violates this standard. Participatory democracy works best when everyone is represented and has equal and equitable access, but why would people want to attend meetings, get involved, participate on boards and committees, vote, or even run for office when their elected officials talk about constituents in this way? Hoyoke deserves better. If you can't meet the expected standard, the standard expected of you as an elected official, or the basic standard of civility and professionalism expected in this room, maybe you shouldn't be here. Thank you.
Anyone online? Online, Jason Montgomery?
Hello, my name is Jason Montgomery. I am turning on my camera. Well, I don't get to turn on my camera. I am a new homeowner here on 30 Glenn Street. I am also here to state my disappointment in the councilperson Bartley for the statements made at the...
Can't... don't reference names, please. Thank you.
Sorry, of a certain councilperson for essentially calling a constituent or an opponent a nightmare during these... during an offhanded comment. And more to the point, kind of the ridiculous grandstanding that I have since moving to the city, I've seen this councilperson engage in. I would hope that our city council would have some form of process for ensuring that a basic level of civility is adhered to during these meetings, and that a basic level of professionalism takes place in this house. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Spencer Fox Peterson?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody. My name is Spencer Fox Peterson. I live at 51 Portland Street, over near the hospital. I'm actually calling or zooming in to discuss the upcoming shot tracker technology that's being granted by the state or the federal government. I'm not exactly sure on the real detail. I'll keep it short. I want to say no to this technology. It's a dragnet. It won't be issued equitably. It's just a whole bunch of question marks that we don't need. There's other ways to make our community safer that we are not trying. Other communities like Denver, even Northampton, Amherst, all over the country, even in our backyard, are doing different things to mitigate violent crime. There's ways to do it. I've spoken with Juan Anderson Burgos, Israel Rivera, and most recently Mayor Garcia. If anybody on the council would like the backstory of my dealings with the Hoyoke police and my also other dealings with other police departments in the area with my partner, I want to co-sign that there's a problem in our local government with feeling that the constituents are below them. And I'm being nice here. I feel like other people were being rude, and I could be a lot meaner, but I'm not going to sling mud. I'm just going to point it out. This problem exists, and it's scary with the guys with the guns. And there's a lot of problems we have in America to deal with our complicated relationship with police. And they're not effective. It's an illegitimate institution, and they can't even respond to emails. So if anybody would like any more information about that, you can always ask the mayor about my interaction. And Mayor Garcia, thank you very much for the time. I appreciate that. Same with Israel and Juan Anderson Burgos and anybody else I spoke to personally on past or present council that's lending me an ear, even though we may disagree. I just want to point out to my other...
We're at the time.
...neighbors, we got this. Like, I hear you.
All right. And is there anyone else? And we do have one email that came in from public comment. Councillor... Councillors, at last night's Charter and Rules meeting... oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was going to get this to the bottom. Daphne Board, 197 Pine Street. Councillors, at last week's Charter and Rules committee meeting, councillor referred to a constituent who was running against him as a reoccurring nightmare. This is not the first time this councillor has demeaned or belittled specific residents in the city. And given history, sadly, I imagine it won't be the last time. The discussion in the council chamber should be centered around items addressing whether the city clerk position should be elected or appointed. And this sidebar from should be saved for the bar stool, not city council chambers. Another claim that was made in the meeting was the council should keep the ability to hire financial positions like the order. I will remind, the fiasco of 2018, when the council hired Arter, quit his job, and a burn-all letter in former Arter was forced to come out of retirement to clean up the mess. At the same time, the council was refusing to set a tax rate, and citizens receive property tax bills late, throwing off household budgets for all of us. What a nightmare that was. Palest in comparison to one person running for an office against you. I realize there are certain rules by referring to a specific councillor and chambers, but apparently the rules aren't against demeaning or belittling specific residents. Daphne Board, 197 Pine Street. That is public comment. Wait, is someone else? Oh, sorry. So with that, we will go back to items one and three. Motion would be to take them off the table again?
Yes, to take them up as a package.
Take them up as a package and take them off. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Councillor Bacon is back. Therefore, councillor Bacon, welcome back. And I'll turn it over to you for one and three.
Thank you. I'm calling in from vacation, and I had a few audio challenges. And thank you, Mayor, for your assistance. I appreciate it. So in regards to items one and three, there has been a recommendation from committee to approve item one, and the majority report in a 3-2 vote was to approve it as written with the any pre-existing public or private school providing education in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12. And legal form has been provided in this regard. Relative to item three, an amendment had been offered to also include residential in the 200-foot buffer going forward from the night of approval, should it be approved. So that would be the minority report out of committee in this regard. So the motion that I would offer is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
All right, so motion to receive, adopt, pass, the first reading. Councillor Puelo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was present at that discussion, and I appreciate everybody. I think there was a lot of good points that were made. So I've been out door knocking on the cannabis stabilization piece and a number of other stuff. And one of the things that came up was this, and it was whether or not residents would be in favor of a 200-foot buffer. I mean, they live next to it, and it's predominantly South Hoyoke Ward 2, Ward 1. I can't speak for Ward 1, but the residents that I did speak to were absolutely in favor of the 200-foot buffer for residents. So I would make a motion that we bring that back, and it would go into effect now, so it wouldn't affect anybody that's already there. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
So the motion was to... say it again?
Yeah, so bring back the 200-foot buffer for residents. So it says 200 feet from any use and residence. If that makes sense. So a dwelling or where somebody lives.
All right, that was seconded. Under discussion, councillor Givner.
Thanks, Mr. President. It says residences, et cetera. So I feel like that's a little vague. And am I reading the wrong thing here? I would be more curious about residences who are against it being within 200 feet, because it seems like really a lot of the areas. So, yeah, I'm not okay with the language that says residences, et cetera. I'm okay with the, you know, the number one, but number three still seems pretty vague to just include as part of this. So I'm not sure. Thanks.
Councillor Jordan?
Mr. President, if I can clarify?
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Bacon.
Thank you. I just wish to clarify that the order was written to permit discussion of any variety of buffers relative to different uses, but the amendment that's on the floor before the council from the ward councillor is for residences. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Jordan?
Yeah, I was just going to speak in favor of councillor Puelo's suggestion. This was the source of some discussion at committee. Essentially, it was a basic buffer. By the way, as an aside, state law allows 500 feet for, pretty much across the board, for schools generally. And I'm obviously supportive of that. I would not want to actually see that mitigated more than is necessary. But in addition to that, the 200-foot buffer for residential and for schools, I don't feel is too burdensome at all. I think that's very reasonable, and I think we should consider that as we're debating this. I think it's to have some basic buffer for people that are living there, to be sensitive to that. Perhaps if we want to nuance this even more, we could make it by special permit to allow not an absolute bar. That is to say, if everybody was in support and there was no opposition whatsoever, then maybe we could do that as an additional middle ground. If the room wants to do that, I would be also open to that, so that you would have an opportunity. But basically, I think we should respect the residential zones, even in the areas of the city where it's not, quote-unquote, "the traditional home with the big yard and the whole nine." These are their homes, and they should get as much buffered protection as anybody uptown would get. I think if somebody was thinking about locating a marijuana facility next door to a residential R1 zone up in Ward 5, Ward 6, Ward 7, Ward 3, I mean, that would just never happen. I don't see a scenario where that would ever happen. And so I think we need to have this type of a protection. I'm also troubled by the fact that I am hearing different overtures to expand the number of zones. This would also give some interim protection, too, as well, because if we ever did get away from IG zone and open this up to all types of other zones for these types of facilities, it would potentially expose more residences. So I think this adds an extra layer of protection for residents. So I think, all things considered here, and again, I think councillor Givner makes a good point. We should be very succinct with the language, not "et cetera." It should be, as she correctly points out, it should say "for residential uses." In fact, you could add that. I believe it's to section 2B at the end specifically. We could add that, or residential uses at the end of that last sentence there in the first paragraph. So we're very tight with the language. So for all those reasons, I think councillor Puelo's put his finger on something here. And when, in particular, Ward 2 is impacted by this, I think the councillor makes a valid point.
Councillor Murphy Rumbelletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yes, we did have a city council subcommittee meeting on this for quite a while, so I'm going to reiterate what I said then. And my opinion hasn't changed, but, you know, I think there are a couple of things that are already in place that will ensure that if someone is supposed to get a special permit, they do already need to have a public hearing. Adding another special permit and another hearing onto that is definitely, I believe, not necessary. I think the public hearing process that we have now allows residents to come out and speak when it directly relates to them. I think that it is a slippery slope to make this amendment much more strict. The reason why this was in committee was actually just to fix a Scribner's error. I will say it for the 4,000th time, but this is what we... this has already been discussed and decided upon. But all of that being said, the fact that there's... a councillor made a comment that this would never happen in a R1 or 2 zone, and that's right, because prior councils have ensured that any marijuana facilities, whether it's a dispensary or cultivation, is restricted to the IG zone. And that's it. And so we've made that decision. And, you know, I've mentioned that we should reconsider this, because if we have a Walgreens or a CVS that is right across from someone's house, that is not any different from a dispensary. Cultivation, we can have a different conversation, but a dispensary, if we're just going to across-the-board limit special permits to this, I just think it's short-sighted. I think that we already had this conversation. And, you know, I'm going to be voting as-is, and thank you.
Councillor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I speak against the amendment. I spoke briefly at the committee level, and in the past, I've spoken against this proposal for several reasons. Some I think are obvious, but some are not so obvious. We are a planned industrial community. We were built, the first planned industrial community in this country, where we were built with a dam that was harnessing hydropower, canals that were bringing in a lot to the manufacturing buildings that were built on the canals, three rings of manufacturing, which primarily now is what we call our industrial general zones. Manufacturing is what, you know, has kept this city going over the years, and it's what's doomed us, you know, when we lost a lot of the paper mills, a lot of the textile mills, industries to the Midwest and to the South. When the city was planned, it was planned with manufacturing, residential, commercial, retail, you know, all together. People walked to work. You know, there was mass transit with trolleys and buses, but the majority of people in the city walked to the factory that they worked in. And this made sense then. Maybe it doesn't make sense now, but that's who we are. So if we... and I don't believe that this amendment was discussed, if at all, during the public hearing part of this proposal, which, you know, concerns me, because I heard it's... the people, the manufacturers who are already in existence aren't going to be affected by the 200 buffer. Well, that's nice. What about the owner of the building that might have a manufacturer that wants to buy the building or wants to lease the building for this purpose? We're hurting a property owner, a property owner that pays a commercial industrial tax to the city of Hoyoke more than the residential owner. It sounds good, and we have ordinances, we have state laws and regs that protect residents. There's yet to be a complaint, that I know of, you know, from the community to a manufacturing of marijuana products itself. We do this by special permit. We can control it by special permit. To create a 200 buffer is just going to cause hardships to property owners. And I remember, it was last year or two years ago, in Ward 1, where 50 people came into this room, asked us to change a zone on Lyman Street to allow for a manufacturer to go in on the former club on the corner of Lyman and North Bridge Street. I mean, the neighborhood came to us. They were in such favor of this type of business. They see good jobs. They see good... and we see good jobs. We see good property tax. We see investment in buildings that have not seen investment dollars in decades. So this amendment, it sounds good, but in the big picture, it's hurting the residential community as much as it would be helping the residential community.
Councillor Jenny Rivera.
As to Ward 1, I have yet to receive a complaint. I've spoken to a lot of people, and no one's complained about the odor. I know Ward 2, it's not my ward, but I do know a lot of people throughout Hoyoke, just not Ward 1 or Ward 2. And I have also asked them to express, because I was invited for the new one being built out on Cabot Street. So anyhow, I have not received any complaints whatsoever. On Saturdays, my husband plays softball, and we hang out at Kelly's School, behind Kelly's School, and we're there every Saturday. And GTI is right by there. You don't smell anything either. I'm not a smoker. I don't like it. But I even walked into the... both, all the dispensaries in my ward, and I walked in and walked out and had no complaints of the smell. Like I said before, I smell it more on the streets and the cars, or when I worked in the schools, the parents dropping off their kids. Totally different odor. But as to my Ward 1 and some of the people I know in Ward 2, no complaints whatsoever.
Councillor Puelo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just... yeah, good conversations. I just want to remind everybody, and I think somebody made a good point earlier, is that a lot of the folks that are impacted by this are people that have lived in this community for years, for a very, very long time. And it's people that feel like their voice is never, ever heard. And this is what somebody said to me was, "Yo no quiero estar ahí, pero nadie me hace el caso, porque no me hacen caso." Right? I don't want that there, but nobody's going to listen to me. Nobody's going to listen to me. We're talking about the public hearing. Well, the public hearing went on till like 11:00 PM last night. Do we expect people to come out 200-something turnout for voters? Do we expect people from Ward 2 to come out and fill the... back the public hearing to talk about how they don't want... I mean, come on. So I think we got to remember, there's people that live here. There's people that have lived there for a very long time, and they feel a very specific way. And I think it's great for somebody that lives up in one of the higher wards to say, "Well, you know, this is great for business." But we got to keep in mind the people that live there and have been there for a very, very long time. Thank you.
Councillor Givner.
Thanks, Mr. President. The only thing I have to say in regards to that is, it is our job...
Um, the only thing I have to say in regards to that is, it is our job to help people understand that we are here to represent them, and we are here to listen to them, and we are here to provide them the information so that they can be available for public hearing. So, I would hope that we were doing our very best to make sure that constituents who feel any sort of ways about anything are making sure their voices are heard, because that's why we're here. Um, and if we're not doing a good job of sharing that information, I think we need to do better. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. I just, uh, don't really wanna do any more of the debating portion of it, uh, 'cause I think good people can agree or disagree on the issue itself, but in terms of the technicality of the amendment, I would make a friendly suggestion to Mr. Puelo, Counselor Puelo, is that at the end of the first sentence of Section 2B, uh, that it would say, "Or within 200 feet of a residential use," period. And that, uh, that same phrase, "Or within 200 feet of a residential use," would be at the end of the next sentence, too. And that, in the next paragraph, it would say, "Between an ME and a school or residence shall be done in a straight line." And in the thirds, third line down, "Nearest school or residential entrance." And then on the next page, towards the last line, pri, at the end of Section 2, "Nearest school or residential entrance." Uh, just so we have the precise language, whether the council votes for it, uh, or not, um, I just wanna make sure that we don't have another Scrivener's error, uh, which is what led us to today. And, um, I, I will say, just by way of procedure, this point was discussed at the public hearing. There was a good discussion by all, um, in the ordinance committee, good points were made by everybody about, um, IG, and I'm glad it is only IG. The whole point of why we went into this by way of the historical, when we passed the marijuana ordinance in 2017, was that the public narrowly approved this in Holyoke, okay? But nevertheless, they did approve it, and so we wanted to make sure what is to be gained for the community is targeted development in areas that we have had challenges as a community to get big time investment in. So, we really wanted to cultivate that in the IG zone. What becomes challenging is not the protections within the zone, but what the Counselor Puelo amendment contemplates is where the IG zone now abuts a residential zone. So, it's not problems within the IG, but where you're at the border between another a residential zone and the IG zone, that's where the issue lies. So that if someone has a piece of property that now abuts the IG zone, what protection do they have? Is there some semblance of a buffer? The suggestion here is 200 feet. Um, you can vote yes, no, however your heart calls you to vote, um, but some would suggest that these residents deserve protection. That's the, and that therefore is the wording, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Maldonado Vales.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, on the amendment, I will vote no. So, as someone born and raised in the flats in a, in a part of the city where many of the people I knew growing up were arrested for a little bit of weed, it did hit me hard when McGivern, um, was talking about, um, Counselor McGivern was talking about the, the dispensary in the corner of Lyman and North Bridge, and I remember driving the other day, I was like, "Whoa, this is right in the middle, like, of this area where so, again, so many of our people were arrested for having weed." Now, I wanna vote no, simply because what our people are also looking for are opportunities. And the problem with the dispensary, the cannabis industry, is that we're not giving enough opportunities to our people to access these opportunities. So, there's an order that Counselor Rivera put in, um, last one around drafting something that's similar to what Boston City Council has around equity, and making sure that these people that were negatively impacted by the quote-unquote "warrant drugs" now have access to this multi-billion dollar industry. So, the same people that are complaining that, or that may be feeling some type of way about seeing marijuana businesses right next to them are also feeling some type of way about seeing bars right next to them, liquor stores right next to them. So, I think, like, if we wanna just talk about dispensaries, we should be talking about all these adult things that are being done in residence. And instead, we should also be talking about, again, how do we get our people access to this multi-billion dollar industry that have jailed so many of our family members? Some of these people that you've been talking to are, have a lot of impact, negative impact because of this. So, that's just my thing, like, we need to, cannabis has been good for our city, cannabis brings money to our city. Do I think we can have too much cannabis? Yes, like, there, we can have that other discussion, but I think my biggest thing is, industry's here, so how do we make sure that our people are having access to this industry and this money, and making money off this? Because this country, this city in particular, jailed a lot of our people because of this plant that now white people in particular are making billions out of in this country. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
Uh, coun, thank you, Counselor Maldonado. Uh, I guess, I don't know, I talked to residents, too, in both Ward 1, 2, 3, 4, everywhere. Um, you could hear the argument on both sides, but ultimately, most of the dispensaries are in, housed within the IG zone, right? And if we're gonna house it within the IG zone with the, with the idea of it, uh, kind of bringing value to the community and bringing opportunity to the communities, then I don't understand why we're gonna put restrictions on, on that, um, opportunity or that, 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 I guess the opportunity, right? Um, the other piece to me is that if we are gonna put restrictions, then I, again, I would echo what Counselor Rambeletti, um, Murphy Rambeletti was stating with regards to expanding the, the area where, um, marijuana in this, um, industry can actually move to, so that way it's not just concentrated in Ward 1 and Ward 2. Um, ultimately, it's, it is not fair that it's only in Ward 1 and Ward 2. I don't care what history was attached to it, or who came up with the ideas. It is not fair that it is in Ward 1 and Ward 2. It should be, like, throughout the community, so that we all share the burdens of whatever it is that you guys are feeling like it is bringing to the residential communities in Ward 1 and Ward 2 as a community, right? Um, uh, I would expect for any counselor to encourage their constituents to come out and advocate for anything that they would like to stand up for, because I would prefer to listen to constituents than a, a, a fellow colleague. I respect all of you, and all of your opinions and everything you bring forth, but I would prefer to listen to a constituent, because constituents speak louder to me. That's just my perspective and my opinion. Um, but, that's, I guess, my piece overall with this.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna make a couple tactical points. One is that if the amendment does pass, it does not trigger a separate public hearing. It would just simply be part of the current ordinance to be brought to bear during a public hearing. And the other point that I would make is, it's been a long-recognized role of ward counselors to reach out to constituents within their ward, and we all know that there are certain people who regularly come to public hearings and come to public comment, but we also know that there's probably a majority of people who are not comfortable in that type of a forum, who prefer to reach out to their ward counselor. And so, for that reason, historically, we have, um, given quite a bit of weight to feedback from the ward counselor as the person who is in close touch with the ward. So, I agree that it is great, and when our constituents want to come to public hearings, we should definitely make them well aware of it. Um, on the other hand, I think if they're counting on us to bring their points forward, um, that is part of our role and part of what we should embrace as city counselors. So, whichever way we believe about the vote, for those folks who see this as an opportunity for our residents with the marijuana development, and it's seen as a win-win all the way around, um, in the IG zone, um, I respect that perspective. Um, however, I also respect the perspective of any resident in the city, regardless of which ward they live in, to have the ability to speak to their ward counselor, put their opinion forth, and make sure that it is recognized and respected in the public forum. Thank you.
So, with that, uh, just so we're clear on the motion, uh, Counselor Puelo, you said you wanna make a motion to add, uh, residential, and then Counselor Jordan pointed out a few places, is that?
Y'all second, y'all second is, that's fixed, thanks.
So, as Counselor Jordan pointed out, in Section B, adding residential use, and then the next paragraph down, uh, for the purpose of this section, adding it there as well, and then on the next page, adding it again, um, so, that is seconded. All those in favor for the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I'd say show of hands, if you are in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. So, four, um, the amendment would not pass.
Okay.
So, now that goes back to the way it is originally drafted, uh, so the motion would be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the changes in the ordinance.
Did you pick a counselor to go first?
I did not, sorry.
I thought I missed.
Peter Tomlin.
Oh, close. Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved that one? So, that, we took up one and three as a package, three was just, so, part of it, so...
Yeah, that was just related to it, yeah.
Okay, so that's done.
So, motion to take up item 2 off the table.
Second item 2, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Committee on Orange, who has referred a handicap sign be placed at 56 Linden Street, recommend that it be adopted. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading, and everybody should have the legal form.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Any discussion on this one?
It's pretty straightforward. Disabilities recommended, committee approved unanimously.
All right, so, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the sign.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
I have someone, like, hijacking me over here. Israel Rivera?
You see them?
Yes.
Hi Daddy!
Jenny Rivera.
What? Daddy's on me!
Oh, here it is.
So, that one, with, before you approve that one, uh, item 4, we did public comment, item 4, uh, from Mayor Garcia, list of the historic preservation, uh, repairs needed for city buildings. Uh, everyone should have gotten a copy of this?
No.
So...
Receive and prefer to finance?
Receive and prefer to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five.
Can I?
Yep, sure, sure, sure. Counselor Jordan.
Without being too quick, this doesn't look like, uh, this is item 4 here, and it has a list of businesses on it for, maybe there's some mix-up? But my item on my desk, marked number 4, has a list of businesses and addresses, unless this is from...
If you keep going, like the...
Yeah, the page after.
Oh, it's in there later?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought the same thing.
Oh, okay, there's more to it, hopefully.
Yeah.
Uh, item number, it's marked item number 4?
It's the page after.
Page after.
Get this?
CPC projects, all right.
It's like the last two pages.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll keep pushing through, no problem. I'll take it up offline. Thank you.
Okay, so that is to finance.
Yep.
Uh, five is from the mayor, uh, all right, so before we do five, make a motion to suspend the rules and ask legal a question, and then I'll update you as to why. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, with regards to the pool and the special permit, uh, there's been some discussion with the mayor, as well as, uh, Lisa Ball, a city solicitor. Um, the, the issue is, the language, the way it was drafted, is what is causing the concern. We went back to the ordinance and viewed the minutes, and you can hear, uh, Counselor Bacon say it, you know, clearly, you know, this is with regards to corner lots, corner lots.
Yes.
Um, however, when this was drafted, it just says you can get a special permit to put in a front yard. And Lisa said, "That's not what we were looking to do."
Although, that's, that's...
So, what she recommended was that we make a motion to reconsider, send it back to ordinance to have them redrafted correctly, because we're not looking to put pools on front yards.
No.
That's not, it's not the intent.
Right.
It was a corner lot because of the way it's situated, and specifically, one on North Hamp Street. So, with that, she did say, she did say to then ask Mike to make sure we do the procedure correctly, and then Counselor Bartley had a very good question on timing. So, with that, first turn over to Mike, and then I'll go back around. All right, so, Mike, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Did I do it right, or did I butcher that one? It's been many phone calls today.
No, I think, um, Mr. President, you did have it right. Uh, the charter allows the council to receive the message from the mayor, and then, uh, specifically says it can reconsider, uh, its action. So, at this point, reconsider can be, uh, defined to include such action as referring back to committee. So, if that's the will of the body, uh, under the charter, it's perfectly permissible to do that, and then reconsider the ordinance in committee.
And then Counselor Bartley had a timing issue, I think Dave helped me out here, the 65-day window, was it?
Yeah, just, just through the chair to the law department. Uh, Mike, I just wanna make sure that if we do reconsider our action, and we send it back to committee, that we're not triggering any kind of a statutory deadline, that, I mean, I'm not, I think that's 48, Section 5, but I'm not exactly completely versed in that whole convoluted law. So, I, I, I was wondering if it's permissible, if, 'cause I, I'm all on board with this, I think it's a great solution, but if it's permissible to not take the chance to trigger it, Mike, if we lay it on the table, we make a motion to reconsider for the purposes of laying on the table here at full city council, because it seems like the amended language is probably eight or 12 words, so I don't know if it has to go back to a ordinance meeting. So, I'm wondering if that would be a way to sort of salvage this.
Certainly can lay it on the table, uh, and then take such action as the council may want in its reconsideration, which would include an amendment to the ordinance, which we certainly could provide.
So, just if I may, Mr. President?
One thing I did, uh, to give you a heads...
I don't, there is a late file from the planning board that was written on April 15th, 2022. I don't know if folks here, it was sent to us.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend our rules and take up late file for Mr. Kelly.
I'm seconding it.
Thank you.
Late file E.
Late file E. So motion is suspend rules, take up late file E with this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Murphy Rumbaletti?
So I think I've, my, my point is that looking through this document, this letter from the planning board, it seems to me like there is an additional, it might not be just an extra 12 words. There, I, I do agree that there's opportunities for this to be allowable. I just think we need to actually like look at what the planning board has said. I don't think that was given enough options. So that's just my opinion to take, you know, I don't know if folks in this room have had a chance to look at this, so that's really why. I just wanted to draw attention to it because it was just sent to us this afternoon, so that's my, that's where I stand.
Counselor Gibner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a chance to read that, but I did want to, I don't think a few words are what we need to change. I would really like to see our zoning laws reflect who, like, if you have a corner lot, there should be some parameters to allow you to have a pool. So I don't see why we're not looking at the general zoning so that we have a blanket law in our city regarding what people do with their own property. It's your yard. You should be able to do what you want within reason. So, you know, just like you can only park so close to a corner by law or, you know, there's, there's reasons why you can't put signs in certain places or you can't build on a corner specifically so that people can turn around a corner. You know, I'm, I'm just thinking something like that would make more sense because special permits, I just, I just think they create a lot of extra for those who pay attention and they leave out people who are not paying attention, you know? So for, for equity reasons, it just makes more sense to me that we just have a law that says, you know, okay, you have this corner lot or you have any lot and as long as you build your pool X distance from your property or from the street lines or what have you. I mean, I'm not in a position to make those decisions, but I know that you can't build a house in the middle of the street for a reason. So I don't see why we don't try to figure out how to make rules that pertain to the whole city so that we don't have to have special permits. Thanks.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just wanted to clarify that the reason that we created the special permit language was, and it was specified out of committee, that it was for the corner lots only. So I, I don't think we have a situation here where it has to go back to committee to clarify the intent. I think it would be proper to table it in city council for consideration of language that does reflect the intent, because I do agree with Counselor Gibner and the closest that we could come to creating sort of a level playing field was to open the door so that people with corner lots would have the opportunity, which at this point, in a number of cases, they do not. So all this is doing is providing opportunity and in a situation such as this, all the abutters receive legal notice, so they are very specifically informed and have the highest opportunity to voice any objections, should there be any. So I think it would be in order to table it here to correct the language to reflect the vote of the committee. We did vet this, I feel, quite thoroughly in committee. Thank you.
Anyone for, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, actually Counselor Gibner raises an interesting angle on this. She, if I'm listening carefully, is saying you don't really need special permits. Perhaps we need to revisit how we're interpreting corner lots and this is essentially what Mr. Kelly is suggesting from the planning board. It's kind of an interesting angle that perhaps if we just work with the wording of how it's being interpreted, the definition of some of these spatial setbacks, we perhaps could allow these things by right. That makes an interesting point. However they want to do it, I think I'm open to either. I think we're looking for a practical solution such that we protect abutters, which is what the whole point behind spatial setbacks is. Conversely, where people are encroaching on those or could be potentially doing something they shouldn't be doing, we want to allow those things provided there's no objection. So this becomes the, it's a check, if you will, to allow really neighbor protection. That's what the special permit is essentially doing is we're going to allow it, but if we do get all kinds of opposition, it's not about, and again, I think, I would say for some of my newer colleagues who I've heard, listened carefully, some of these arguments about special permits, this isn't about further council power and encroachment. This is about neighbor protection. That's why it's to allow us to permit uses that could be potentially controversial, but we put them out there as not by right, but by special permit so that we're going to allow people, instead of, instead of having the whole world in black and white, we're allowing this gray area that then is allowed to have special permit protection that we can say these things are somewhat potentially controversial. We don't want to ban them outright. We don't want to allow them outright. What we're saying is we want you, the 13 people we elected, to use your discretion and to therefore view this issue so that if everyone's on board and there's no issue and it seems like a no-brainer, then allow it. If there's massive opposition and everybody says, no, this isn't really what we want to do, you can deny it as opposed to just allowing it or denying it. So I tend to think that the right course of action here is that we do table it here, that we allow the law department to work this language and if they want to do it in consultation, if the planning board, as I'm listening to some of their suggestions, work out a solution that everybody can feel comfortable with. I mean, if everybody's within the spatial requirements and you just happen to be on a corner lot, then we don't want to make a big deal out of that and there's no opposition. Let's just, let's just make this work. And that was the intent, specific to corner lots. Non-corner lots follow the standard rules. They have traditional setbacks and configurations. There should be no real need for issue there. And no one's trying to allow swimming pools in front yards. No, nobody is in favor of that essentially. It's where you get caught in these odd definitions of what's technically a front yard. And I think Mr. Kelly examines that good. That's what the ordinance committee sought to do, to allow people who have corner lots to have these without any issue. But we said, again, the protection, if there was that off-chance one that was a problem, we would have the special permit protection so that you could potentially vote to protect your neighbors and your constituents. That was the theory behind the special permit allocation. So I think yes, I think we should table it, allow the law department, the planning board, as has been suggested here, to work on this language and bring it back before us in two weeks and we can move forward. And it sounds like the mayor wants us to just clean up those couple of points and we move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera?
We're still talking about pools?
We don't have, we don't have to.
It's amazing to me, the pool issue is such a, such a hot topic. I wonder who's the pool for? That's, that's all I got to say.
All right, so Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we actually have in front of us is a veto with what we voted on returned to us.
Yep.
And we're suggesting we have a window to amend it.
So from legal, from the solicitor was to motion to reconsider our action and we can either send it back to committee or as from what Mike has said, we can lay it on the table and they can come back. And the language really was. A pool may only be constructed within the front or side yard of a lot by special permit issued by the city council, of which Lisa, the solicitor said, really the discussion was all about corner lots. You should add in language that was about corner lots, only not allowing pools in front yards. Which I agree what, what she was saying.
Which I appreciate and makes sense in hindsight. My, my question is this window we have, because we've never done this before, we, we have no ability to reconsider any vote that we took at our prior meeting. The charter's clear about that. Our rules are clear about that. We, we just did a scrimner era on a marijuana ordinance that we had to start the whole process over. And my question is if we do have this window, you know, we need this window to be defined very carefully, you know, at what point, how far can we amend this and at what point do we have to start over?
You have till, from what Jeff.
Not talking about days, I'm talking about the meet, you know, I'm hearing two things here, you know, the, what you just said, you know, seems to be fair, seems to be, you know, simple language change, as Counselor Jordan said, can be done in two weeks. I'm hearing other things that do make sense, but it's a, makes it a much bigger window, which technically who I'm worried about is we're, we're about to set a precedent that breaks any precedent we've ever had before.
I'm just going by what the solicitor told me.
Well, I'd like to get that in writing because it's contrary to everything I've ever read and everything we've ever done.
Yeah, she was saying that if you look to the charter, section 24, and I think Mike said it as well, is where you'll find that ability. So seeing no one further, Counselor Maldonado Vales?
One question before I speak, what happens after the 65 days? Does that mean?
Well, it's actually 90.
90 days. What happens if we don't act on it?
I think you'd have to start over the whole process again.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, I'm one following Counselor Gibner saying, echoing that is, we have a lot, I've said it before, we have a lot of special permits and it becomes sort of like you're making special treatments for individuals. I know that's not what we like to say the intention is, but in this specific moment, we're making a special permit for a specific individual versus just making the change to allow corner lots. I, maybe I'm in the minority, but I, it's your property, it's your private property, you should be able to do what you want within that property as long as we have the dimensions, making sure that abutters are being kept safe. So I would love for it to go back to committee so we can have that discussion around the actual ordinance change, not just changing the language of the special permit, because my, yeah, that's what I would like to focus on.
Was there anyone else? Counselor Bacon?
So I just wanted to clarify that by allowing the special permit process, the door is open so that people can do what they wish to do with the property that they own. The way the ordinance sits right now, they cannot do that. And this was seen as the most straightforward way of doing it. And if I had caught the fact that corner was not in the language of the ordinance, we could have had the form amended because we're within the window of the timeframe where it could have been corrected and we still are in that window, which, and that's a different situation than when we've exceeded the window. So I would just point out that difference. Thank you.
All right, so is there a motion? Because I know we talked about options, but no motion's been made yet.
Do, is it?
I'll make a motion that we lay it on the table to receive the legal language that reflects the vote of the ordinance committee.
All right, so motion has been to table, can't debate it.
Not debating, I just want to raise a point of order.
Okay.
So I, because I think Counselor McGivern raises an important point and he deserves a good answer to his point, which is the implications of reconsidering an ordinance that was passed and bringing it back at a meeting. Like conveniently, by tabling this, we don't implicate that issue at all. So we now have two weeks to decide on that, provided, and I don't know if the chair wants to rule on this now, are we still, the, the opportunity to reconsider is still preserved two weeks from now if we table it?
I would say it is because if you're just making a motion to table, you're not reconsidering because that's not the motion.
Right. And we know you can only reconsider an item once. We do know that in the rules. I have not had an opportunity to study this issue because I didn't realize this was going to come up to prepare in advance, but I'll go back to my Roberts book and I'll go back to the charter. I see section 24 was cited. I'll have two weeks to do my homework on that. But, okay, so if we table it, then we should be good for two weeks. The law department will be able to work on the language and then we can address Counselor McGivern's procedural point and then the substantive points, which sounds like most of us are on the same page about. Thank you.
So the motion was to table, we're taking five and E together, the late file E and table it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so it's tabled.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Very good.
Six.
A motion to take item number six and seven and send them to public service?
Motion to suspend rules, take up six and seven, six and seven as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six is for the library board and that would be appointing Toby Wilson or Thomas Wilson, not Toby, I'm used to it. Seven is for commission on disabilities, that's Reedman, and that's both to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eight.
Motion to suspend the rules and take eight, nine and 10 and confirm the reappointments.
Second. Motion to suspend rules, take up eight, nine and 10 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Eight is for commission on licensing board, Jose Carrera, reappointment. Helen Busby, which is the parking rec, reappointment. And Kelly Kern for the library board, which is a reappointment. Motion be to receive, adopt and confirm the reappointments of all three.
Can I ask just one technical question? Solidly in favor of Kelly, there's no issue in terms of her now being over here and also simultaneously being on this there, because it's an uncompensated position, so she should be fine, right?
There shouldn't be a problem with that. There'd only be, you need the special approval by us if you're collecting two.
Got it. Okay, very good. I could, Mr. President?
Counselor McGivern?
Isn't there an issue of her capacity as a human resource director with the library itself? So being on the board and being, yeah, so now you're kind of like two department heads, right? Because you're on the board of directors of the.
So how about we take eight and nine, grant the reappointment and then take 10 and just refer to public safety to get.
Public service.
That's what I meant. All right, so eight, nine, to reappoint those. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
To public service just to confirm the issue.
Yep, that she's all set.
With a copy to legal, please.
Yeah.
With a copy to legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Just catch up on that. simultaneously being on this there, because it's an uncompensated position, so she should be fine, right?
There shouldn't be a problem with that. There'd only be, you need the special approval by us if you're collecting two.
Got it. Okay, very good.
Mr. President?
Counsel McGivern.
Isn't there an issue of her capacity as a human resource director with the library itself?
So being on the board and being, yeah, so now you're kind of like two department heads, right? Because you're on the Board of Directors of the?
So how about we take eight and nine, grant the reappointment, and then take 10 and just refer to public safety to get?
Public service.
That's what I meant. All right, so eight, nine, to reappoint those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
To public service just to confirm the issue.
Yep, that she's all set.
With a copy to legal, please?
Yeah.
With a copy to legal, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Just catch up on that. 11 is a notice of communication outreach meeting.
Motion to receive and send to ordinance?
Send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 12 is a renewal.
Motion to suspend our rules, take 12, 14, and 15 as a package and further to approve them, assuming that they paid all their fees.
With any, with any prior conditions, if any.
Check the taxes. Okay, so that's all up to date. So motion is take up 12, 14, and 15 as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, 12 is the Ivory Billiard Lounge, renewal of 19 pool tables, one billiard table. 14 is renewal of the Palm Broker License at 448 Appleton. And then a renewal of a secondhand license at 448 Appleton. All taxes, so motion is to approve with prior conditions. We don't need a roll call on this one, do we?
Clerk of Call and Roll.
I believe you do.
Yes.
Yeah, we do. All right, so Clerk of Call and Roll, you're voting on all three, 12, 14, and 15.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that. Uh, 13?
Ordinance, please.
Is the petition for, uh, from R2 to BL, so that would go to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, President's Report, before we get that, I'd say, make a motion, go out of order to item 28.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item 28, from Counsel Bartley, McGee, Puelo, and Tomlin, that the City Council present proclamation to Gary Rome for its 25th anniversary celebration, which is May 13th. Motion be receive and adopt.
Formed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And with your adoption, here is the proclamation. The reason I want to read up is because that was, uh, former Counselor Patty Devine, uh, read the agenda, saw our request, and?
Quick.
Got it already done.
Impressive.
So that's part of the President's Report, I just want to thank Patty once again for, phenomenal job, and if you, if you look at her handwriting, it's absolutely beautiful, what she does for us. And to let you know, she, she doesn't charge us for this. This is done out of just wanting to make sure she helps us out. So Patty, if you're watching, thank you very much for everything that you do for us. Uh, also, quickly, I want to thank Joe, uh, or Counsel McGivern. If some of you were here last term, he was giving checks out, not because he's just a generous man, because he does our flower fund. And when you donate to that, we do, you know, put ads in the book because we always get requests for donations or whatever. And Counsel McGivern runs that flower fund, makes sure he gives us updates, and at the end of the term, he hands back a portion of it. So Counsel McGivern, thank you very much for everything that you did on the flower fund and thank you again for stepping up again this year. Go forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, but it's, it's a group effort. I think we all know that. It's, it's our money, we do it not secretly, but we do it privately. And I thank all the members of the, uh, over the past two years, over the last term. Uh, we still have seven pro, seven plaques to give out to people who are no longer with us. And Counsel Bartley has a good suggestion, and I'll talk to everybody later about setting something up.
Okay.
And the flower fund often pays for these proclamations too, just so new members know that their money's being put to good use. And if you still choose to join.
And Jeff just pointed out, he wanted to say thank you because we did donate to, uh, his run and that went right to Dana Farber. So it's a great thing that we have and, you know, thank, I know Counselord Jourdain did it for years, it's a lot of work, so I just want to make sure they're recognized for, for taking that on and doing that for the council, it's very much appreciated. With that, we'll move on to Counsel Bartley.
I just want to thank, uh, Counsel Tomlin, Counsel Puelo, former Counselor Sullivan, uh, for joining with me two Saturdays ago for just what was an amazing cleanup along Route 5 South, where we, uh, took out two huge, and myriad volunteers from Ward 2, 3, and out of town too, unbelievable, that we took out two full totes of recycling, about three dozen trash bags, debris, tires, TVs, all sorts of things. It was total volunteer effort. We did it all ourselves, we took, we picked out a lot, bagged it, and recycled all of it and trapped, and properly disposed of what was disposed of. So that's a, that was a Saturday morning, I think it was two Saturdays ago, rainy, kind of a drizzly day. Uh, I want to also thank Chief Pratt and, as well as Sergeant Montavano, and then Captain Cruz, uh, for providing us with the, uh, the board, uh, with, which is very helpful for, uh, for protection that we had on the, uh, community cleanup. It was really a complete team effort and, uh, and they ought to be congratulated for, for spending, you know, at least three plus hours of, of hard work and their only thanks was, uh, you know, box of Joe and a Dunkin' Munchkin. So, uh, so they, they were phenomenal. Thank you to all you people, thank you.
Counselord Jourdain.
Yeah, Mr. President, did want to mention one other human interest story of, uh, of note that once again, uh, just shows the kind of character of Hoyoke and, uh, the area. Many of you may have heard that there was a, recently, over the last week, a cat stuck up in a tree behind, uh, Tokoniki and, uh, I don't know, this is a tough cat, I'll tell you, the, the weather that we've had over, I mean, last night, insane. So anyways, it did go up on Facebook yesterday and, uh, I think everybody's heart went out to the, the owner, this lovely lady who lives up in, in Tokoniki and didn't know what to, what to do or who to turn to. And, uh, I was glad to see, uh, you know, just reaching out to people in terms of the fire chief, uh, the fire commission, our mayor, uh, they really activated to see what the fire department could do. As it turned out, unfortunately, the tree was in the back of Tokoniki down a hill, like in the woods, like fire apparatus or anything couldn't really get to it. We didn't have the, uh, the city didn't have the equipment to help, and I know they came back multiple times. Sort of the, it then turned to, uh, Mr. Velez, who's our animal control officer, who did a fantastic job. He went up there, Eric, and, uh, spent the whole morning there, uh, seeing what he could do to help. But ultimately, the heroes of the day that stole the whole, uh, moment and deserve all the righteous glory of helping this poor cat is, is Linden Tree Service out of Belcher Town. Uh, just some lovely, lovely people, uh, so thoughtful. They actually donated their services, had to have a tree climber go up this enormously large tree, and then it was out in an extended branch that the cat, and it's amazing, the skill of these, of this individual to go out there and climb out what would seem infinitely dangerous for any of us. He does it with such skill and precision, it's incredible. Rescued the cat, uh, got the cat back home to owner, safe and sound, and it was just such a, a lovely, touching tale of, uh, of community and, uh, and people's resolve to, uh, to look out for other people. And I thought it was just great how the community responded and in particular Linden Tree Service, um, uh, just wonderful people and a wonderful company. So, uh, I wanted to mention that and everybody can, uh, rest easy that Loki the cat is home safe and sound after, uh, a week up in the trees.
Thanks for sharing that Ward 5 story while I'm away.
We could have used you, I don't know what your tree climbing skills are, Counselor, but.
I don't see Linda or John climbing up the tree, that's for sure.
It wouldn't have been.
Maybe I'm wrong.
That is good, thank you for that. Uh, so now we move on to reports of committee, ordinance, finance, public safety, none, so we're on to public service. 19A, command public service, who was referred nor that the city council review and approve the, uh, PR, uh, cultural district resolution, recommended that be adopted. Counselor Tomlin.
Motion to accept and adopt the committee report.
Motion to receive, adopt, and Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, I believe, uh, we, we discussed this, uh, last, uh, week, everybody I believe has it on their, um, 19A, um, on their packet here, um, the resolution of the city of Hoyoke to create a state authorized cultural district to be named the Puerto Rican Cultural District. And I think this has to be endorsed by us, um, but I believe we're going to have to send this to ordinance, uh, because we have a, uh, the mayor to, uh, appoint, um, I believe, we amended this, the mayor to appoint a city official to represent the city within the district, uh, and this is part of, uh, receiving grants, you know, from the state government, um, some federal grants and state grants, I mean, but to have this, uh, district mostly down in the, um, the main street area.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, just through the chair to the chair, uh, I would say that we can receive and adopt this tonight, and I would say if a separate order would have to be proposed by, you know, the mayor could file it through Counsel Tomlin if an ordinance's change is needed to appoint somebody to serve in this position. So is that, I think that?
Want to do it that way?
Yes.
Seconded, yeah, I think an order will be provided for that to, to get this to the ordinance committee.
All right, so anyone further on this one? Seeing none, motion is receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 19B?
Motion to suspend, take 19B and C as a package.
Motion to suspend rules, take up B as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is to, uh, appoint Lynn Haran to the Commission on Disabilities, uh, serve a three-year term, which will expire March 2025. 19C is to appoint George Cologne to the Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority, uh, this will expire November 1st, 2024. Motion is that they confirm the appointments, Counsel Tomlin.
Yes, um, committee report that we have, uh, appointments may be confirmed for these two individuals, um, and the first one, uh, for the Commission on Disabilities, Lynn Haran was here from Southampton Road, and many are familiar with Lynn, uh, who's been here several times on, uh, very top, various topics within the city. She has, uh, looked to serve, to make Hoyoke a more friendly place, uh, really looking forward to get, uh, better access, uh, to the public parks, buildings, and transportation. And Lynn has come down here and there, and is definitely somebody that understands the difficulties getting around the city. Um, and I think, uh, we had a good conversation with her and how she is dedicated to, to make it better for, for all citizens, no matter what their, uh, their abilities are. So I, I think this is a great appointment by the mayor and, uh, recommend that be confirmed.
And C?
And C is, uh, Mr. Jorge Cologne came down here, uh, somebody that's been involved and, and actually attended several different group meetings within the city. Um, he's a, uh, been in the culinary profession for 22 years, uh, he lives in Ward 1, uh, very involved in the city, uh, mentioned to him how it's, uh, if he has a time, it's a very important role to be on the redevelopment authority, and, uh, he's willing to step up and, uh, wherever anything needs to be done, that'll help, uh, somebody in the citizens of Hoyoke, he's there to, to, to help out. So it's another great appointment by the mayor.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, I just want to thank, thank the chair for, uh, running a great meeting, but also, uh, uh, thank you to the volunteers because the city cannot possibly function, uh, without their support. And we had two very enthusiastic, uh, potential commissioners, uh, assuming we're going to vote for them tonight. And also thank you to the mayor for really putting forth, uh, two very qualified individuals. And I think that trend continues tonight, uh, I think that trend continues tonight relative to the appointees that we, we sent over to public service already, and I'm looking forward to it. Uh, my only regret is, if I may, is, I, you know, I just, I don't know those two commissioners, we, I've never met them. So I'm going to go out of my way to try to meet the commissioners, you know, I don't want to hold them up, of course, but I need to, I know other counselors do that, and I regularly do it myself, but I, I need to, we just reappointed two people that I, I don't think I know, so I'll go out of my way to reach out to them. But just to the point, Mr. President, they're great appointees and we're all behind them. Thank you. We're all behind them.
Seeing no one further, motion is to confirm, uh, both B and C, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
D, uh, command public service, who was referred in order in light of recent news reports and issues with security of mail and votes, who requests that the clerk, city clerk and the board registers discuss with the city council, the vote counting and securing the process. This is complied with?
Yeah, this is, uh, from, uh, September 2020 and, uh, we brought this up, uh, Counsel Vacan said that this was already taken care of back then, so I just wanted to bring it up and, uh, the questions were answered. And I believe the city clerk had sent forward to us, uh, the answers to the questions that were asked at that meeting and, um, I just wanted to make sure that this is taken care of because it was in the jacket for about a year and a half, so it's complied with.
All right, so motion has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
19E, command public service, who was referred nor that the representative of the Massachusetts Fishery and Wildlife, Animal Control Department, Public Service Committee, discuss a plan regarding, uh, increased amount of wildlife in the city, and that's complied with. Counsel Tomlin.
Yes, this, uh, this is a very interesting, uh, we had a very good, uh, discussion here, we had Mr. Dave Waddles in for National Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, and also our own, Eric Velez came in, uh, the animal control officer in Hoyoke. And I, I learned a few things, you know, and people are trying to, you know, be friendly with animals and stuff, and, uh, sometimes you just got to let them be. Um, we have several bears in the area, we have foxes, we have raccoons. Um, I think about a year ago, we had that, um, animal on North Hampton Street, he said he had mange, I guess, I think it was a, um, wasn't a fox, a coyote.
Coyote.
And people were taking pictures of it and people were getting close to it and wanted to, you know, help it out, but sometimes it's, uh, just to leave it alone, sometimes they get them from another animal. We all see, think, uh, seeing on the news, bears going through our yard, a lot of it's because people put out food, they're not putting out the trash receptacles and covering them up, they got bird seed out there. And also, uh, Eric Velez stated that if anytime any animal gets hit, you know, sometimes we see that dead skunk or raccoon in the road to contact him to clean it up, a lot of times, uh, the vultures will come down and take it off the road and, and, and take care of it. But, um, it was an interesting meeting, um, Mr. Waddles was great, uh, you know, gave a good, uh, discussion on, on the different animals and what, what happens this time of year, they're just out looking for food. And it's that time of year, we're sort of, you know, they're, they're in the reservoirs and they're around the area, they're just trying to, trying to survive. Um, and sometimes, uh, we get a little bit too close to these animals and basically the, the, the common theme was just to let the animals be, you know, let them do their thing and, uh, mostly, most of the time, they won't harm you. But it was a good meeting, uh, it was, this is an order, uh, actually was brought up last year by Counsel Leahy, Counsel McGee, and I think it's important that, uh, people know that, uh, you know, uh, when the wildlife's out there, just to, to be cautious and, uh, to let them do their thing. And, uh, if there's any areas where you, you see any animals that, uh, need help, to contact the, uh, Board of Health, the, uh, Animal Control Officer, Mr. Velez.
Counsel Bartley.
I just want to add to that, uh, for Mr. Velez was, where he's a real credit to the city, and he, he, he prides us that the See Click Fix app is still feeds into the Board of Health and, and, uh, the various departments, and it's a viable, useful tool for all of us to, uh, to use. So if there's a, if there's a broken sign, or if there's an animal, or whatever it is, you can use the app to take, you know, take the photo and, and then remit it to, to the appropriate, uh, department. And so Eric is, uh, again, to be credited for, uh, for being a great employee of the city. And Mr. Waddles, uh, I, I mean, to have a biologist of, uh, to come in and volunteer his time with us for at least 45 minutes, it was, it was an educational, uh, treat for me, and I really appreciated, I don't even know how we recruited him, I don't remember, I don't recall how, how he came to the committee meeting, but, uh, I'm grateful for his, uh, his presentation and, uh, and, and, uh, and I learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, I just want to add on that, uh, thanks to our administrative assistant, uh, Jeffrey, really get these people in here for our meetings, whether it's Zoom or publicly, uh, sometimes that goes unnoticed how we get, uh, these individuals in here, but, uh, want to, uh, give a shout out to, uh, Jeff for, uh, contacting these people to try to, uh, to get in here in their meetings, and it's really, uh, really helpful for, for us to get the, the, the work done at the committees, which is, you know, the majority of the work that we do on, on the city council, the committee work where everything gets done, so really appreciate it, uh, Jeffrey.
So with that, this one has been complied with, all those in favor? So with that, this one has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No DG and R, onto Charter and Rules, twenty-one A, Command Charter Rules, who refer that the city councillors will attend. City council and city council committee meetings in person, except can be made remote attendance by the city council president or chair, as long as the chair in the quorum is present. This has been complied with, Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, just a little bit about the last meeting, I, I feel like I was excited the month before, where there were like eleven counselors. This last one, I think, I know you weren't able to make it, I think only two other counselors, so there wasn't a lot of, I guess, participation. But the participation that was there, I hope that, you know, we going forward stay on topic and that the message was received from the constituents. Due to some of the things that were said during that meeting. With that said, twenty-one A is, our discussion that night was, and along with the other orders that are in here, which is complied with. These are orders that were put before our term, and pretty much the conversation was, you know, I'll just stick it to this, stick with this first one. This one in particular, the conversation was, the state has already extended it until July to allow for virtual meetings. I think after that time, if we want to put it in this order again, then at that time, we can put it in. But I think the intention is just to clear up as much as possible and really be intentional as to what orders are in our jackets. So that's why the committee decided that it's complied with.
Anyone further on this one? So motion been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-one B, Committee on Chartering Rules, who was referred to the city council in accordance with Master in Law, Chapter forty-three, Section forty. Submit the following question to the voters. As a binding referendum, shall the city allow for the sale of marijuana products as those terms is defined GLC nine four G? This has been complied with, Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Can we take twenty-one B with twenty-one's D and E as well?
D and E, okay, so motion is to suspend the rules, take up B, D, and E as a package?
Never mind, sorry, sorry.
What do you want to do?
Keep it with B, sorry.
Just stay with, alright.
Stay with B.
Strike down.
So, I'm B complied with, same sort of idea here, the state right now is deciding whether to align social consumption, allow social consumption. There's that whole discussion happening up there, so we decide as a committee, if someone feels so strongly about putting this question on the ballot, then they should resubmit it. It is a question and order that was put in again before our time.
Alright, so motion has been complied with, all those in favor? All opposed? Do.
Twenty-one C is fine.
What, so you go C, okay, alright. Twenty-one C, Command Chartering Rules, who refer that we create a technology advisory board to advise accounts on the impact and implications of technology innovations and on financial services, human services, infrastructure. And this has been complied with, Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you, so this was like probably one of the first orders I put in myself, I'm just trying to use it as an example of getting orders through committees discussed and out if they no longer make sense. This one in particular, you know, I'm coming in here, I ran on a platform of technology and reading, improving our technologies. The reality is there's a lot of other streamlining issues that we have. And so there was another order that I put in about adding a cannabis committee, and I think that's one that will address more the issues that we have in our, in our council. So if I feel, or if anyone feels that technology advisory board should be something that we put in the future, then I think we should put in that order again. But for right now, again, going back to what I said earlier, just cleaning up the jacket and being intentional as to what we're actually discussing in our committees and not just sitting on it. So it's complied with.
Alright, so seeing no one else, motion has complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And D and E together, can go together.
D and E together. Motion to suspend rules, take up D and E as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? D is Chartering Rules, city council vote to place the following question on the ballot as a binding referendum. Should the treasure be changed to an elected position to be appointed position and combine the duties of treasurer and collector, complied with? E, the Command Chartering Rules, that the city council review and vote whether a city clerk should be appointed as opposed to elected, that's been complied with. Under discussion, Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you, so I put this together just, I know it's two different positions, but it's about making these positions elected or appointed. Mayor Garcia was in attendance, our city clerk, our tax collector, there were different people in attendance. And there's government, there's one of the committees that Mayor Garcia put together is a government restructuring. So sort of the conversation that came from that is, let's sort of allow that to happen, take place before we put these specific questions forward. And again, if someone feels really strongly about these questions, then we, of course, you more than welcome to refile them. But at the time, it just doesn't seem, there's a lot of other things going on that we feel would address these specific questions.
Alright, seeing no one further, motion that both are complied with, abstaining on voting for that. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And we are off to. There is no joint committee, so motions, orders, resolutions. From Counselor Vakin, order that the city solicitor draft a ballot question for the next eligible election for voters to decide. The CPA tax should reduce from one point five to point five in light of the current financial hardships to our taxpayers. That would go to.
Chartering rules, please?
Chartering rules, all those in favor?
And a copy to legal?
And a copy to legal. So to Chartering Rules, copy to legal, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Twenty-four from Counselor Vakin, that our city solicitor. Oh, okay, they're, draft a ballot question to revoke the CPA tax, and that be placed on the next eligible election ballot. For voters to decide if they want to keep the CPA after five years, that to Chartering Rules.
Mr. President, yes, to Chartering Rules with a copy to legal. And for the members that were not on the council at the time of the CPA, the way that the CPA tax was begun in the city was by a vote of the city council. And the authorization by the voters was for five years. So the only way that the voters can weigh in relative to the CPA tax is after the five-year period, to have the opportunity to have their say relative to this tax again. So this is the way of giving the voters the right to say what they want to do relative to this tax, thank you.
Alright, so to Chartering Rules, copy to legal, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Twenty-five is from Counselor Anderson Burgos, order that the gas sucker install two streetlights and poles on Locust Street between Sergeant and West Franklin. One on each end of the street to illuminate the dark sections of the streets. So motion would be receive, adopt, send to gas electric, and I think we always have to send it to the mayor as well.
Yes, a copy to the mayor.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
From Counselor Anderson Burgos, item twenty-six is, order that the police department provide the city council with a report of the intersections at the highest rates of accidents. A discussion of safety concerns would be helped, so this would be to public safety and a copy to HPD, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Twenty-seven is from Counselor Anderson Burgos, or that we, that we consider do not block the box pavement markings at the intersection of West Franklin and Linden.
Ordinance.
So that would be to ordinance, and a copy to the engineer, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Just on twenty-five, I, I'm sorry, my ears aren't working great, but copies should go to DPW too, because the, it's in their budget.
So going back to item twenty-five, this was the gas and electric, install two streetlights, so that was to receive, adopt, send to HGNE to the mayor and to DPW, adding that. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And twenty-eight was already done, it was approved. Twenty-nine is from Counselor Bartley, order to refile from two thousand fourteen, the city council and DPW amend any ordinances to allow for road improvements on Whitey Farms Road. To allow for left, left-hand turn out to the Key Mart Plaza. So this would be two ordinance, copy to the mayor.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Also a copy to the engineer for, for road improvements. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thirty is from Counselor Bartley, at the DPW and the mayor, look, public spaces for trash and recycling. Should be started off the pilot program, which will require funding and management to ensure that debris recycling bins are maintained. So this would be to public safety, copy to the mayor and DPW.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-one is from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Puelo, at the city, DPW engineer mayor. Look to remove one half of the double sidewalk between Walcott and Congress Ave for the purpose of reinstalling a tree belt. So this would be to.
Yes, the city engineer, the mayor, and a copy to Department of Conservation Recreation.
Do, do you want to receive and adopt it, or do you want to send it to committee?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to committee, I, I don't want to.
So I'm not sure, because you're.
Too hard.
So.
Public safety?
Public safety.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't pick the committee, my bad, yeah, public safety sounds great.
So send it to thirty-one, would go to public safety, a copy to the engineer, mayor, and DCR?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two from myself, that the city council invite in Jim Lavelle and members of the HGNE to.
Mr. President, can we send this, if, if you would, to public service, only because we have a green technology thing that's gonna be, we're gonna need Jim Lavelle in as well, so.
Let me just explain this one, you know, we were looking, the mayor and I attended, and Counselor Rivera was here as well, a Ward Seven meeting with regards to trees coming down and sidewalks going up or being redone. And there's a lot of concern on certain streets in the area with regards to poles being moved, whether it's Ward Seven, Ward Three, what have you. So the mayor, myself, Counselor Rivera, said we do a follow-up meeting in three weeks. And I reached out to Jim Lavelle and he said absolutely, so the thought is to have it, and we still gotta confirm whether it's gonna be the high school auditorium or the senior center. To not only address trees being cut down, sidewalks being done, but HGNE poles and everything. If you want, we could have it as a public service and take up that stuff as well. I just want to explain why this is being filed this way, so you understand it.
Yeah, Mr. President, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, I just, I didn't realize the background to this, but I, because I know we're gonna have to have Jim come in for a matter we have tabled in committee. So I just want to do it as, as efficiently as possible, but I don't think the committee's gonna meet for a bit, so, so maybe perhaps you just want to just set up a sep- a separate.
Okay.
Mr. President, if I may?
Counselor Rivera?
Is there a reason why I wouldn't go to public safety?
Well, the, when we're at the Ward Seven meeting was the three-week.
Because I haven't met yet, and I could actually put it on the next meeting for next.
You want to do it, do it that way, and then that way, we just gotta confirm if we can have it at the high school or the senior center. Because as you know, that, the room that we were in at.
Yeah, that was hot, it was tight, yeah, yeah, I mean, but it works for me whichever way, if you want to send it to public service, but I just feel like that if we did public safety, I haven't met yet, and we're gonna meet possibly next week, if not the following week.
Yeah, let's just confirm with the mayor on that three-week timeframe that we gave. So this would go, so it's HGNE to come in, give an informal session, updating residents on, you know, pole location, cost analysis above and underground wiring. And that would go to public safety, then confirm with the mayor where we're gonna have it, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just one process point, and I would ask this of all the ward counselors. If you're having ward meetings, I mean, if they're private, they're private, but if you're having general public meetings on these issues of public interest, invite the at-large counselors, shoot us an email if you could. Because it would be, those are helpful, you learn a lot at those meetings, and I know myself as an at-large counselor, if I know about them, I really try to attend those and, and listen in and listen to the feedback. So please share those invitations, and hopefully the other at-large counselors feel the same, thank you.
Mr. President?
We will, this was just a quick meeting to really get to an issue that popped up fast. And I thank the mayor and Counselor Rivera for, for being there, but absolutely, we'll invite all of you, because this is now gonna be a citywide issue, not just Ward Seven.
Very good.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of, of this issue, and I, I think it makes sense to, to have it, if you can deal with, and I think it may get a good crowd, the senior center or the high school. And if I could ask to be added on to this order, I'd appreciate it.
Yep, and Counselor Tomlin, and Jeff did say he will post it, once we get the date set and the location, he will post everything on the calendar and stuff. So you'll have your notice and everything else, Counselor Puelo?
Can I be on it too, please?
No, no, I'm just kidding, of course you can, thank you. Sorry, sorry. Adding the counselors that wanted to, and that would go to public safety and Counselor Rivera.
Can I, can I join the party?
Sure, sure, sure. Thirty-three is from Counselor McGivern.
Suspend the rules, Mr. President, to take thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five as a package, refer to committee on finance.
Alright, motion to suspend rules, take up thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-three is twenty-five thousand from Veteran Benefits to R and M Fields. Thirty-four is two hundred and fifty-five thousand to R and M Building for personal equipment. And thirty-five is the Assessor, twelve thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents to professional assessment and printing and binding, all to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Suspend the rules and take thirty-six and thirty-seven as a package and adopt.
Suck it.
Motion to suspend rules, take up thirty-six and thirty-seven, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-six is twenty thousand, six hundred, sixty-one dollars and twenty-six cents from lieutenant sergeants patrolmen to injured on duty. And thirty-seven is from firefighters, two thousand, two hundred forty dollars and six cents to injured on duty. Thirty-six would represent. Ten. And thirty-seven would represent one. So motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, this is not uncommon, it's just the accounting.
It's just, it's, it's a vote to, just for accounting purposes, to separate salary line items when someone is not actually working because of an injured on duty. Of those ten, I think only one, maybe two are long-term, everything is just, is very short-term at the moment.
Alright, so motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call row if you vote yes, you're voting for thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vakin?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Gibner? Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambalati?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We vote you approve those. Thirty-eight from Counselor Paul, that no Jake Brake signs be installed at the intersection of Ingleside and Main facing south and the other north. Motion be receive and adopt?
Yeah, please.
All those in favor, Counselor Jordan?
Just have Legal use the word Jake Brakes, I'll give you about ten or fifteen years ago, I kinda had my hand slapped by the company that actually created Jake Brakes. To remind me that, that is actually a trademarked name. And so we had to, it's actually, you have to change the word from Jake Brakes to Engine Brakes.
Yes.
Because Jake Brakes is a trademarked name, and they said, they, they were nice about it, but they, they said, please don't put our trademarked name on a sign. And so we had to change the wording to Engine Brakes.
Alright, so.
So I'll make a friendly amendment, we could, no Engine Brakes.
Amendment to change Jake to Engine, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, go, go back, I, I'll have the history that Counselor McGivern has, but we go back, Kevin stated about fifteen, I think it was Counselor Jay O'Neil that we had in Ward Seven that brought this up because of up in that North Hampton Street area and coming down.
Down the hill.
Down the hill, yeah, they would do that, so if you could, if, be honored if I could be on that order with you. Thank you.
Alright, and Counselor Tomlin, Counselor Gibner?
Um, thank you, Mr. President, just for clarification, is the reason for this, the noise?
Oh, yeah.
Very, very obnoxious here.
To that point, are they just using the, these brakes because they're going too fast and we need to enforce our speeding laws?
No.
No, from my, yeah, so my understanding is they use the Jake Brake, or, or, oh, sorry, Engine Brakes, I don't want to get sued. It's, because it's easier for them to not wear their brake pads out, the other brake pads, so they hit the Jake Brake, creates a lot. So they hit the Jake Brake, creates a lot of noise, but it's like a cost of fiction away from them. Plus, they're probably speeding too, but...
I mean, I happen to know someone who drives a tractor trailer and I asked them this because I thought this was a really, I didn't understand what this was for, because if people aren't speeding, they shouldn't need any special braking systems in our town. Maybe this will deter their speeding.
Alright, so 38, ending Counselor Tomlin, changing Jake to Engine. Oh, Counselor McGivern, sorry.
I, I think Counselor Gibner has a good point. Um, I, I understand it's, it's used to save brakes, but Engine Brakes are for emergency purposes also, which means someone has to stop quick. And with our speed limit speed set citywide at 25 miles an hour, with a few exceptions, one being Route 5 and, and of course, 91 is, is a federal highway. Um, I should think that there'd be no Engine Brakes throughout the city. We could just post signs at the, uh, gateways. That'd be nice. I agree. No, you're right. 100% right.
I'll, I'll second that.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll send this one off and then we'll have another order. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 39 is from Counselor Paul, that no parking sign, uh, be installed at the entrance of the parking lot of 415 Main Street. So motion would be receive and adopt?
Please, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We do have some late files. Uh, A is, uh, from Counselor McGivern, uh, 2,000, uh, from Maintenance Demo Supervisor 2, Head Clerks of the Council of Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
B, uh, from Counselor Bartley, ordered that, uh, two entry handicap spaces on Brown Ab be deleted. So that'd be ordinance?
Yeah, that was through the engineer, right. Ordinance.
Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 C is a free cash certification. We should all have received the email, uh, from the mayor on this one, sent to Finance.
Finance, please.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? D is from the mayor, uh, it's, uh, regarding the, uh, free cash certification.
Finance, yes.
So Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
F is from the Law Department. This is the, uh, Community Preservation Funds, and this is the legal opinion regarding, um, what it can be used for. Um, this is what we asked for on the approval, if we're going to pay for, or not pay, but give to Girls Inc. pursuant to the legal opinion. So that's the communication from the Law Department on it. Counselor Jordane.
Yeah, Mr. President, just want to thank the Law Department for getting this legal opinion back so promptly. And, uh, this should therefore dispense with the, uh, based on the condition precedent set by our vote at the last meeting that should resolve any issues I believe we now have at this point relative to the 150,000 appropriation here. I would ask that a copy of this be sent to the CPA committee, and, uh, that'll be that.
Counselor Mercer Rambeletti?
I would, I, I just, so, thank you. I got this, as we all did, um, around 2 o'clock this afternoon, and I had a chance to look through it. And I am, am I allowed to ask the Law Department any questions on this, or?
So...
I'm at the Finance if you want to have a meeting.
The, the issue is since it's a late file...
Okay.
You'd have to suspend the rules to then take it up and then discuss it. And our orders require that, or it's better to send it to Finance to then go over everything that they had.
You'd have to invite them in, right, if you want to ask some questions?
Okay. I can pick up the phone too, right?
That as well.
Okay, alright.
I'm just saying for tonight, if you were looking to get questions answered, you guys suspended rules because of the late file.
Okay. Well, then, I don't, I don't know.
Why don't we send a copy to Finance, in case somebody has, uh, would like to ask questions, uh, down the road? Happy to finance.
I'll second, I'll second sending it to Finance.
To Finance, with Counselor Maldonado Velez and Counselor Bartley.
When we voted on the Girls' End Project, it was on the condition when we received legal opinion, I think, consumer vulnerabilities, you know, we did receive it today at 2:00 PM. I think there are some questions on, I don't know, on the, on what this is. I appreciate the work, um, that, um, Attorney Duncan did on this, um, but there are some questions on this. So I think, um, I guess my question is, one, since we received this legal opinion, does that mean that that project is done with? Or if we send it to Finance, that means we still have questions and the 150 is still on the table?
Finance as to what's going on.
And the 150 is still a possibility.
Um, that I, I mean, technically, the opinion is saying i- it was for maintenance and therefore that's prohibited. But we can take it up in Finance and have Legal come in to address the opinion as to ultimate payout. Nothing's going to be paid out until, you know, this is complied with. So Counselor Bartley, then, Counselor Gibner.
Yeah, just, just a quick point of order. I, I think if we're going to have a discussion, we have to suspend our rules on late files. I think that's, that's something we, that's something we generally follow. But I just wanted to humbly ask for a, uh, just consent to send a copy to, I think you sent it to CPA, but certainly want to send it to the Historic Commission as well.
Yeah.
Uh, please, please add them, uh, on to this because, uh, because it came from, uh, I, I think the order was generated from, from their vote.
Alright, so then Counselor Gibner.
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, so the opinion from our attorney, um, merits a second review from somewhere, because it basically says that most of the funds distributed in municipalities all over Massachusetts are invalid. And, you know, multiple cities can be sued for using the funds the wrong way. So I think, I would like to know how we can revisit this in some way, because just saying tonight that because of one, our one opinion, um, the funds aren't going to be able to be dispersed. I think we might be getting ourselves into some trouble with that.
That's why we'll, we'll take it up in, in Finance.
Okay.
Counselor McGivern?
A quick question on the, uh, legal opinion. Is it signed off by the solicitor?
No.
It's not a legal opinion.
Oh.
Well, the solicitor can sign off on a legal opinion. Anybody can issue advice in a legal opinion, but the solicitor must endorse it. And I think the state needs to weigh in on this one.
Thank you, Joe.
So with that...
Thank you, Joe.
To the Historic Commission, copy to Historic Commission, copy to CPA, and to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Well, in, in fairness, the city solicitor has a number of attorneys that work for her.
Anybody can write the opinion.
She, she...
I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not disagreeing with that, Counselor Jordane.
She, she can delegate who she wants to write her own.
But she has to sign off on it. It has to be issued by, that's in the charter. No, that's in the ordinance.
I, I'm not just going to take that off memory, but nevertheless, um, we'll...
Alright, so...
We'll see.
Yeah, so with that, it's going to Finance. We'll get the answers. Because it's a late file, we're not going to... Go any further. So motion is to adjourn. I was waiting for it. All those in favor?
Okay.
Okay.
Stand adjourned. 9 o'clock.
No record.
Good night, everybody.
Modern day records.
Alright.
Enjoy your vacation.